Jeremiah 33 verse 3. Call to me and I will answer you, and tell you, and even show you great and mighty things, things which have been confined and hidden, which you do not know and understand and cannot distinguish. Call to me and I will answer you. Thank you, Lord, for such an invitation. We'll start with the chorus. He is Lord, he is Lord. He is risen from the dead and he is Lord. Every knee shall bow, every tongue confess that Jesus Christ is Lord. And another verse says, he is king, he is king. He will draw all nations to him. He is king. And the time shall be when the world shall sing that Jesus Christ is king. He is Lord. He is Lord. He is risen from the dead and he is Lord. Every knee shall bow and every tongue confess that Jesus Christ is Lord. He is king. He is king. He will draw all men to him. He will draw all men to him. He is king. And the time shall be. And the time shall be when the world shall sing. When the world shall sing that Jesus Christ is king. That Jesus Christ is king. He is Lord. He is Lord. He is risen from the dead and he is Lord. Every knee shall bow and every tongue confess that Jesus Christ is Lord. Heavenly Father, we appreciate you. We love you, adore you, we bow down before you. Heavenly Father, we appreciate you. Heavenly Father, we appreciate you. Heavenly Father, we appreciate. We love you, adore you, we bow down before you. Heavenly Father, we appreciate you. Son of God, what a wonder you are. Son of God, what a wonder you are. Son of God. Son of God, what a wonder you are. You have cleansed our souls from sin. You have cleansed our souls from sin. Send the Holy Ghost within, son of God. Son of God, what a wonder you are. Holy Ghost, what a comfort you are. Holy Ghost, what a comfort you are. Holy Ghost, what a comfort you are. You lead us, you guide us. You lead us, you guide us. You live right inside us. Holy Ghost, what a comfort you are. Heavenly Father, we appreciate you. Heavenly Father, we appreciate you. We love you, adore you, we bow down before you. Heavenly Father, we appreciate you. Thank you, Jesus. We do appreciate you, mighty God. Thank you, Lord. Want to sing a little bit livelier one? Mine, 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 Jesus is mine. Mine when I'm weary, mine when I'm dreary. Mine, 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 Jesus is mine. Mine, 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 Jesus is mine. Mine when I'm weary, mine when I'm dreary. Mine, 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 Jesus is mine. Jesus alone is mine. Yours, 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 Jesus is yours. Yours when you're dreary, yours when you're weary. Yours, 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 Jesus is yours. Jesus alone is yours. Mine, 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 Jesus is mine. Mine when I'm weary, mine when I'm dreary. Mine, 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 Jesus is mine. Jesus alone is mine. Feel, 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 feel. Jesus a feel. Feel when you're weary, feel when you're dreary. Feel, 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 Jesus a feel. Jesus alone a feel, feel, feel. Mine, 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 oh, Jesus is mine. Mine when I'm weary, mine when I'm dreary. Mine, 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 Jesus is mine. Jesus alone is mine. One more time. Mine, 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 Jesus is mine. Mine when I'm weary, mine when I'm dreary. Mine, 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 Jesus is mine. Jesus alone is mine. Yours, 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 Jesus is yours. Yours when you're weary, yours when you're dreary. Yours, 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 Jesus is yours. Jesus alone is yours. Feel me, feel me, feel me. Jesus a feel me. Feel me when me weary, feel me when me dreary. My, feel me, feel me, feel me. Jesus a feel me. Jesus alone a feel me, feel me, feel me. Thank you, Lord, thank you, Jesus. Alright, so we'll go to God in prayer. Uh, do we have any burden on our hearts we want to mention to the Lord? Persons. How is she? So those who are ill. Accident. And the elections coming up. Alright. Father Jesus, we thank you. We thank you, Lord, for this moment, mighty God. A moment, Lord, that you have provided. Father, when we can gather before you, though few we are, Lord, but you are the center of our minds, our attention, our desire at this time, mighty God. So, Lord, as we come to you, we put before you, mighty God, these requests that were mentioned. Those who are ill among us, Lord, we place them in your hands this night, my God. Father, you know each one, Lord Jesus, in our church, in our families, mighty God. We place them before you, Lord. Father, you know where they hurt, mighty God. You know the ailments that they suffer from, mighty God. And, Lord, you know how to heal. If there's anyone who knows how to heal, it's you, mighty God. And you said that healing is our bread, mighty God. So, we depend upon you, Father, to heal, to put joy in their hearts in the midst of pain. When they remember you, Lord, and how merciful, how great you are, Lord, it will bring joy to their hearts, mighty God. It will cause, oh mighty God, that they will, instead of focusing on the pain, they will focus on you, Lord. And that their hope lies in you, Jesus, the mighty healer, who can heal all diseases, all ailments, Lord. So, we ask you, Lord, that this evening, oh God, they will trust you, not even trust the doctors as much as they trust you, because the doctors have to still trust you, mighty God, we pray. So, Lord, we ask, oh God, that whatever procedures that they may have to go through, each one, Lord, we pray, mighty God, that you will provide and that you will cause the instruments to, to the right instruments to be used, the right medications to be chosen and all that, Lord. We call that done in your name, Jesus. Father, we present to you this young man who had an accident this afternoon. Father, you know what situation he is in right now. I pray, mighty God, that instead of swearing or cursing or threatening, Lord, that he will be calling your name, mighty God. And that he will depend upon you for whatever healing touch he may need, mighty God, he will trust you. Father, we pray for his family, that they will also go to you with him, oh mighty God. So, Father, we ask that you will cover him under your precious blood and cause, Lord, that if he has, if he does not know you, Lord, that he will come to know you as Savior and Lord. We pray, mighty God, for the elections that are coming up. We present to you every part of our island, mighty God. Every member of parliament, every person who will be running in this election, we put them before you, mighty God. And we, we claim, mighty God, your touch on their lives, Lord, that they will humble themselves. They will recognize you as the power more than they are, mighty God. And that they will depend upon you. We pray, Lord, that the truth and honesty will come from their lips, mighty God. And we pray, Lord, that they will epitomize peace and lawfulness, mighty God, to their, their charges, mighty God. We pray, Lord, that each person that has a vote will go out and vote peacefully, mighty God, doing no wrongs, mighty God. No wrong intention even. We pray for peace, Lord Jesus. We pray for honesty, we pray for calmness, Lord. No arrogance and disorder. So, Father, we, we ask, Lord, that the whole island will experience a peaceful election in your name, mighty God. So, Father, as we are about to conduct our Bible study, we pray, Lord, that you will have your hand on Rev as he delivers to us tonight. We pray, Lord God, that whatever flows from his lips, Lord, will be from you. And that our hearts will be enriched, enlightened, informed, and encouraged to continue this walk with you, mighty God. So, Father, we say thanks for your blessings and your mercies in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Doreen. Good evening, everyone. And we want to turn our attention back to the topic of persevering purposeful prayer. And the more I think about it, the more I have to admit there is this awareness, this alertness, that sometimes and very often, we do things out of routine, out of rote, without considering all the implications, all the meaning that there is. And if we're not careful, our prayer can take that kind of route. Jesus warned his disciples that in praying, they should not be like the Pharisees, who believe that by their long speeches and praying out in public places, they will be heard. We certainly don't want to follow and to fall into that kind of trap. But we also, at the same time, don't want to ignore or undervalue this great potent weapon that God has given to us as believers, first of all, but also as the means by which any man anywhere can call upon God and find salvation. Now, we know that Scripture tells us that God does not hear the prayer of sinners. He is not obligated, but he certainly is willing to hear those who call out to him in repentance. The unbeliever is more the beneficiary of God's providence, his good nature. Bible says he makes the rain to fall upon the just and the unjust. The believer is attuned, invited to call upon God. And by virtue of that, we who name the name of Christ are in a enviable position of being able to call upon the Lord. And he is committed to hearing, committed to answering, committed to showing us great and mighty things which we do not know. He is committed to doing exceedingly abundantly above what we are able to ask or think. So, that is the background as to why we're doing what we're doing. And just by way of a quick recap, last week we said that the purpose of prayer essentially is the pursuit of God's will on earth. We also said that prayer has no boundaries. Hmm? We can pray to God about any need in our lives. We touched on that when we looked at 1 Kings, chapter 8. And we're going to go back to 1 Kings, chapter 8 in a little more detail later on. We also said that we have the privilege of praying in the name of Jesus. Hmm? And praying in the name of Jesus wasn't just tacking on a little magic formula at the end of our requests. Praying in the name of Jesus is praying for things that are in agreement with God's will, which is the essence of praying in his name. In Matthew, chapter 6, when Jesus is telling or teaching, laying out a model prayer for his disciples, he goes through, "Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven." So, the priorities of the kingdom are what we are after as kingdom citizens ourselves, as persons who are aligned and are called to pursue the will of God in how we live, in the goals that we set ourselves. We want God's kingdom to be here on earth, exercised, lived out among us by how we live, and his will to be done. Then he tells us in St. John, chapter 14, verse 13 and verse 14, "I don't call you servants any longer, for a servant does not know what his master is doing, but I have called you friends. You have joined up with my party. You are aligned and supportive and committed to the purposes with which I am committed. You are friends. You do this not because of an obligation. You do it because you see the value of it and you are in love with the one who has called you to be his friend." Hear how intimate that relationship is, how close it is. "All things that I have heard from my father, I have made known to you." Hmm? And he makes a point to these disciples as he makes a point to those who have believed upon him because of their preaching down through the ages. "You have not chosen me, but I have chosen you and appointed you that you should go and bear fruit and that your fruit should remain." What is the purpose of that? "That whatever you ask the Father in my name, he may give to you." That is an important clause, an important purpose. Whatever you ask the Father in my name, he may give to you. Now, hear this. Asking the Father in my name carries with it a condition. It is a condition by itself. Because if you're asking and not asking in the Father's name, he is under no obligation to respond to the request. So, whatever you ask the Father in my name, now, whatever there is virtually anything you want, any need you have, any situation you face, but it is governed by what follows in my name. Whatever you ask the Father in my stead, I am not going to ask the Father for anything that is outside of his will. I'm not going to ask the Father anything for my selfish pleasure. I'm asking the Father for things that are, we are agreed on. Gloryify him and establish his witness in the earth. So, you and I can't act outside of that and get frustrated when we don't see our prayers being answered. Now, note in that too, the element of a progression. It begins with God choosing us. It begins, it goes next to us being appointed for a purpose that we should bring forth fruit and bring forth fruit that remains. Interested not just in our works, I'm interested as well in our character, the fruit that remains. And we move beyond that to whatever you ask the Father in my name, he will give it to you. So, 1 Kings, chapter 8, verse 22 to verse 53, we started here. And this is Solomon praying at the dedication of the temple. This is the replacement for the tabernacles that followed Israel on their journey through the promised land, or to the promised land. They were living in a tent, now they're building a tabernacle. They were living in tents. The house of God was a tent, a tabernacle. Now, a permanent, beautiful, magnificent edifice has been dedicated to God. And Solomon, the king, is praying a prayer of dedication at this temple. One thing we hear from Solomon in this prayer is that there is nothing that is outside the scope, the power of God to hear and to answer, to respond to. Now, I have made some notes and I want to encourage you to read through this prayer and see what kind of areas you think might be left out, things that we couldn't bother or we shouldn't bother to ask God about. Because when you look at it, anything, any area of your life, anything, any area of the nation's life, God is able, God is interested, God will respond. So, Solomon puts to him military issues, personal issues, spiritual issues, natural phenomenon, famine and drought. He puts illnesses to him, whether plague or whatever sickness. He puts relationships. He puts economic issues. He puts relationships between foreigners and the people of Israel, who he says are going to hear of this great God of Israel and are going to respond to him when they see the mighty works that he does. And he closes out the prayer. And he closes out the prayer with, with something like, "What gives us your people the right to call upon you and to expect that you will answer? On what basis do we have this confidence that we can talk to you about anything?" Well, first of all, let, let's remember that God facilitates, God makes it possible. He is interested in us having communication and fellowship with him. That is how we started before Adam fell. Bible says that God used to talk to him in the cool of the day, communication. Then in Genesis, chapter four, after Cain had slain Abel and other children were born to Adam and Eve, we, we hear the, the, the clear indication that not only was this communication going, but man came to realize his, his absolute unavoidable need for God. The Bible says at that point in Genesis, chapter four, verse five and six, "At that point, men began to call upon the name of the Lord." So here, here now, the, the, the awareness of this need and the awareness of the access is being brought up again by Solomon as he closes this prayer. He says, verse fifty, "Forgive your people who have sinned against you and all the transgressions which they have committed against you and make them objects of compassion before their captors, that they will be merciful to them." Verse fifty-one, "For they are your people and your heritage, whom you brought out of Egypt from the midst of the iron furnace. These people belong to you by virtue of you calling and appointing and preserving them." Verse fifty-three, he says, "You singled them out from all the peoples of the earth as your heritage." In the same way, you and I have the confidence that Jesus has saved us. He is now our mediator between God and man, the man Christ Jesus. The apostle Paul tells us, we have access to him and we have access to this God who knows no limits. A thing might be impossible with man, but with God, all things are possible. He can intervene in plague, he can intervene in drought, he can intervene in famine, he can intervene in war, he can intervene in politics, he can intervene in just how governments are run. He sits upon the circle of the earth, he rules in the affairs of men, and he calls us to himself. I feel like I'm going fast. Am I, am I, am I going too fast? All right. Next thing we want to look at, the fact that when in considering that there is nothing that is impossible with God, is the comment then, if, if, if nothing is impossible with God, why do I not get what I asked for all the time? Because if, if Jesus says earlier on that whatever you ask the Father in my name, he will give it to you, surely that is a blank check, that's an open door. Hmm? Father, don't pray and attack on. In Jesus' name, amen. Well, in Jesus' name goes a little deeper than just being able to call the three words. James, chapter four and verse five, no, James, chapter four, verse three. James, yeah, James, chapter four, verse three. James says, "You ask God for something and do not receive it." Well, let's back up, let's go to the start of James, chapter four. "What leads to unending quarrels and conflicts among you? Do they not come from your desires that wage war in your members, in your body, fighting for control over you? You are jealous and covet what others have, and your lust goes unfulfilled. So you murder. You are envious and cannot obtain the object of your envy, what you're aiming for. So you fight and battle. You do not have because you do not ask it of God." Verse three, no. "You ask God for something and do not receive it because you ask with wrong motives, out of selfishness or with an unrighteous agenda, so that when you get what you want, you may spend it on your selfish desires that don't have anything to do with the will and the purposes of God." It is, it is a summary of why we sometimes don't have our prayers answered because the motives are wrong. Not only could motives be wrong in God's all-seeing wisdom, God's all-seeing eye, you're not ready for it yet. If, if you get it, you're going to ruin yourself shipwreck. No. Last week, we looked at the matter, the, the, the clear statement, pronouncement by our Lord, Matthew, chapter six, that your father knows that you have need of these things, the, the, the material things. Your father knows that you have need of them. So consider the question then. If my father knows that I have need of these things, why do I have to ask for them? Is that reasonable question? If not, we just let us, yeah, and we not bother have to ask. Why do we need to ask? Is, is that reasonable question? Because if we, if we talk about blessing and running with down, don't it? Huh? Or that only happen in the good times? John, chapter eleven, twenty-one and twenty-two, and John eleven, forty-one and forty-two. You and I have, in good days, on good days, we have a confidence in God that he is going to take care of us. We send messages to him that our brother whom you love is sick. And we expect that he's going to drop what he is doing and come deal with the matter. And him spend two more days where he is. Well, he turns up and Martha is speaking on our behalf. She says, "Lord, if you had been here, my brother would not have died." That's what guilt? We're leaning on him or we're just accepting a fact that this is how it is? If you had been here, my brother would not have died. And you get the message long time, me and you would add. Look how much people who now serve God are do better than me. Oh come. But that, that is, that is, that is the, the, the human part of Martha. Here another human side to her. She says, this is her turning, her, 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 her looking away from just accepting, say, our brother dead and you take long to come. Even though I know, even though I know that whatever you ask of God, God will give you. Whatever you ask of God, God will give you. This is Martha identifying the relationship, the nature of the relationship between Jesus and the Father. And he goes into a teaching about the resurrection and the life, helping, helping Martha to recognize that even raising Lazarus from the dead is no big thing. What is more important is believing in Jesus as Savior and Lord of your life. That is the more important thing. But we come to verse forty-one because he is going to answer Martha's prayer. But he will answer the prayer in, in, in ways and on terms that please God and glorify him. If the master knows that you have need of these things, why then do we need to ask? Here is how we can find an answer. Here is an answer to that from the experience of Jesus dealing with the resurrection of Lazarus. Verse forty-one, "Then they took away the stone from the place where the dead man was lying. And Jesus lifted up his eyes and said, 'Father, I thank you that you have heard me and I know that you always hear me.'" So before, before the prayer starts, he begins to give thanks to the Father that you have heard me. Isaiah tells us that before we ask, he hears. And while we are yet speaking, he answers. Hear what Jesus is saying. "I thank you that you have heard me." In other words, the prayer, God know him heart already. God know him need already. So I pray, "I know that you always hear me." Talking about the confidence in the relationship, confidence in the faithfulness of God, confidence that me and you as his people, walking terra firma in 2024, can have, are being encouraged to have. "You always hear me." And then another but, another but. Because of the people who are standing by, I said this. Hmm? What has he said? "You always hear me." My prayer is that these people who are standing by, I want them to believe that you sent me. When we pray and God answers our prayer, unlookers are going to glorify God. That is why we're not afraid or we shouldn't be afraid to testify about the goodness of God. If you go back one minute to First Kings eight and the prayer that Solomon prayed, particularly where it mentions the impact of Israel's life and Israel's witness, their relationship with God on foreigners. Verse forty-one. Yeah, verse forty-one. "Moreover, concerning a foreigner who is not of your people Israel, but comes from a far distant country, for the sake of your name, to plead with you, for they will hear of your great name, your strong hand of power and outstretched arm. When he comes and prays towards this house, this temple, here in heaven, your dwelling place, and do according to all for which the foreigner calls upon you, praise to you, so that all the peoples of the earth may know your name and reverence you with awe, as do your people Israel, that they may know without any doubt that this house which I have built is called by your name." You see the concern, you see the effect Solomon has and what he expects out of the prayer, the relationship between Israel and their God. It is going, the, the more prayer you answer, the more people going to see and know. Eh? The more we testify, the more people going to come from far. Hello? I'm making sense to anybody? Is that realistic expectation? Jesus says, "The reason why I am praying to you with these people standing around is that they may believe that you sent me." What gives God the glory? Hmm? The relationship don't secure. He is not worried about his father ignoring him or asking something of the Father that him can't do. Jesus says, "The only reason why I am praying like this is that these people may believe that you sent me." For me and you now ask because we can't try do it with self or me know somebody are foreign. Me have health insurance. Whatever the reason, so we not bother ask. Jesus says in front of this crowd of witnesses. Does that mean that every single time God might bring somebody back from the dead? Hello? No, no, no. But how many opportunities have we missed? If him come and put it in your heart, pray it. I, I hear, I, I, I've read the, the, the story over and over of the, the man of God, Elisha dying. Prophet did remarkable things. Raised a young boy from the dead as the spirit of God led him. Axe dropping the bottom of the river. And take it up, find it. It float. And the Bible says that Elisha was sick with the illness from which he died. Then the prophet, him couldn't pray just like when praying times pass. You know what happened? In the field of battle one day, they threw a dead man into his grave. When that dead man touched the bones of Elisha, the dead man came back to life. So the business of why God would answer some prayers and not answer others. Quite frankly, it's not your business and it's not mine because he's the sovereign God. Hello? We have already looked at two possible reasons why not possible, two obvious stated reasons why some prayers don't get answered. They're asked out of our lust, our desires, our selfish desires. And they are by virtue of that being the result of our selfish desires. They are not in keeping with the will of God. Now, we, we have to understand too that the will of God often includes the timing. Ah? Because like we said before, if, if we get it now, we'll go back slide. Or we'll kill off ourselves. Hmm? When, when Habakkuk prayed, God told him the prayer going to be answered, but the vision is for an appointed time. Last thing we're going to say tonight on this matter of God's timing in answering our prayer is this. He is just as interested in your character as he is in providing physical, financial, whatever need. Hard for us to accept sometimes because we feel it must happen now. But him want you to develop a little patience. Him want you to develop a little faith. Hello? Eh? Him want you to be able to show mercy to people. Hmm? Him want you to develop some gratitude. Hmm? To recognize that even in your desire for more, he has given you more than you actually need. That can make sense? Because him more interested in what you become, who you are, how you reflect him, how me and you, when him hold up the, like the silver smith. Eh? Purifier of silver, him can't see him reflection in it. Sometimes the prayer formulas that we have in mind don't deliver that product. Okay, I smile unless we have money. Don't have anything to be thankful for unless I get what I want, when I want it and who I want it. You have not because you ask amiss. You're asking for the wrong motives. James says in the Amplified Bible out of selfishness or an unrighteous agenda. We're going to wrap up there tonight. Next week, God willing, we look at some hindrances to prayer as well as some helps to our prayer. All right? Any questions or comments? Angela, you're looking like you're working out next week already. You look like you're working out next week already. And, and the questions or comments before we wrap up? Reminder that tomorrow morning at six, by the grace of God, we meet here for prayer. Between six and twelve. It would be good if everybody could stay for the whole time. But if that is not possible, come and stay as long as you can. Let's petition God. And, and we, we, we are praying as well. Not just for our personal and church needs. The, the Prime Minister has asked that Christians spend time praying for the, the nation. Uh, there, there, there is skepticism about it. But we, we should not wait upon Prime Minister Andrew to ask if we pray for him before we pray. We don't know say dog name my support if we not pray for this country. Ah? We are encouraged again in scriptures to pray for those who are in authority. Because they have a responsibility from God towards, to, to the rule and to him. Hmm? Okay. Yes. I have it upon good authority. I have it on good authority. Can I, can I quote it again? Eh? John fifteen, fifteen and sixteen. John fifteen, verse fifteen and sixteen. No longer do I call you servants, for a servant does not know what his master is doing. In other words, you know, I just follow back on me. You not just, I, you, you, you have moved from just obeying commands. I have called you friends. Here Jesus is definition of a friend. All things that I have heard from my Father, I have made known to you. You're, you're part of our team. Later on, Paul will go on to call us laborers together with God. All right? Laborers together. Jesus continues, you did not choose me, but I chose you and appointed you that you should go and bear fruit. You're not just a consumer, you're a producer. Bear fruit. And that your fruit should remain. In other words, what I am doing in you or through you is genuine. That way, what you do in my name and as a result of the relationship you have with me going to have genuine impact, your fruit would remain. And as we go through this bonding, submission, conformity to his will. That word that means implies results in whatever you ask the Father in my name, whatever, no limits, whatever you ask the Father in my name. In other words, you, you're asking him like how me would ask him. You're asking him for the things that I would ask him for. Because remember now, you are my friend. Me and you I see eye to eye, we are look for the same things. If, if you remember Jesus is, is Luke? Jesus is going back, going to Jerusalem. And the, 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 going through Samaria. And Samaritans pick up that him don't plan to stay there. So them start look upon him away, you know? And the disciples, James and John said, we cannot just call on some fire upon them and deal with them case. Cause them are this, the Lord. And Jesus says to them, you, you do not understand the purposes of God. Cause he has not come to destroy men's lives, but to save them. What that is implying, what it is stating is that we know by the grace of God have the kind of mind that Christ has. That's why we can't ask, so what him, him want? That's why we can't say, not my will, but thine be done. Don't, don't worry, don't worry. Some, some people want us to ask for specifics and specifics have them place. Hmm? But your Father know what you have need of. Your Father know your heart. Your Father know how for bless you. Sometimes what we see as blessing is death. Not to mention death. Hmm? So. That answer the question, Sister Barbara? No? Come on. Yes, yes. Because, because in my name is in my faith, in my interest. It's, it's not just three words that we can pronounce to tack on as a magic formula to our prayer. Hope so that the recording can hear the question.
Okay, I am, I'm asking, I'm saying in my name would not necessarily mean, when you pray, you say in Jesus' name. It doesn't necessarily mean that.
No. It means asking the same kind of thing that Jesus would ask. Because you're representing him. You remember, remember, you know, remember, remember the model prayer again. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Can't get no more perfect order and authority than there is in heaven. Me and you there upon for him side, we are begging the grace to help us live like kingdom people in the world. The, 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 I would encourage us again, read First Kings eight, twenty-two to fifty-three. Just to get an, a little inkling of what, what is available to us in praying to God. I mean, you know, really understand, we, we, we think, we think sometimes that God will only do this and God will only do that. When, 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 when Israel, the spies approached Rehabs. Rehab say, everybody in the city free down because we hear what God has done for you. All our courage and our composure is gone. Solomon is saying, people are going to hear about you. Hmm? And, and when them hear about you, them going to want to come here, come pray to you. Jesus said, I am praying in front of these people standing by so that they might know that you've sent me. So there, 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 there is a powerful witness in answered prayer. All right. Father, we thank you. Oh, sorry, you're. Father, we want to thank you for the assurance this evening that all things, nothing is impossible with you. Sometimes in the depth of our need, we are tricked into believing that you're not interested in this, that this is for somebody else. Father, help us, teach us what it means to pray for your will to be done. It means putting our selfish ambitions and motivations so that you can be glorified. Thank you, Lord, for the privilege we have of access to you. This is something we did not earn. You just say, call unto me and I will answer you and show you great and mighty things that you do not know. Thank you for knowing our needs. Before we ask, teach us to trust you, to wait upon you. Even though the answer tarries, if it's in if it's in keeping with your will, it will come to pass in your time. While you're providing, we ask you to build a character in us. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.